Sherry's not here, so I'll chair until she gets here. Sound out being recorded by Northern Media. If anybody else is recording, please let us know so we can act you to the record. We start with the pledge of allegiance behind us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for its existence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda, we have the vote to approve the minutes of October 12th, 2023, open session. Has everybody had a chance to read those?
Yep.
Are there any corrections, additions, et cetera?
No.
Nope. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th open session meeting. Ezra? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Post and one abstained. Next up, we have the warrants. Dan, is that you or is it Sherry?
Sherry.
It's Sherry. We're gonna skip that for now, come back to that. Third on the agenda is our student representative update.
Does anybody come back to that? The wifi is just not working right now.
Want to come back to you too? Alright, we're getting fast here, but come back to that as well. Okay, we'll go to the fourth item. That's the opening of the school remarks with Mr. Higgins.
Here. Can you send it to the admin? Joe put his extra call for it again for me.
He's got another one to put on top of it.
Stuck down a little bit the camera giving. So thank you for joining us here at the LGN. Mr. Joe, we assign these donuts and some snacks over here if anyone would like to participate. So year two for Mr. Higgins at LGN. We're off to a great start. I would like to start with facilities update. Under Mr. LaZat's direction, Mr. Joe, our head custodian and his team, Mr. Bob, Mr. Chris, Mr. Andy, and our high school student Rose, did an amazing job this summer. Walked the halls, every hallway in the school, got a fresh coat of paint this summer, the cafeteria as well. You notice, I don't know if you, Andy, you might notice, the new paint job up top of both the stage and over on this side. It used to be wood paneling, from fresh coat of white paint. Beautiful new banner. Mrs. Hadfield helped out with that with our school lunch program. So away with the company inside of the transition thing that was there before. It really wasn't a lancer. And our school model, Little School Big Heart is up there. We did all that this summer. I say wait, they did all that this summer with having extended school year here at LGN and also the Acceleration Academy. So we had students in the building pretty much all summer and made all that happen. So really appreciative to our custodial staff for that. Our playground phase two got complete. We also have a beautiful new fence around the playground for some of our students, which is great. The basketball hoops and the swings also got a fresh coat of paint to match our new playground, which is amazing. Thanks to the PTC for making that happen. Two weeks into, not even two weeks into the school year, we had a great opportunity this year to join Peter H. Reynolds, the author and illustrator, at DOT Day, the International DOT Day that happens. It's broadcast all around the world. I think it's like 38 countries and millions and millions of teachers and students participate. We had the wonderful opportunity to have Peter come and join us last year because of the Need Grant here at LGN. He loved our vibe and our school so much, he invited us to this special event with Dr. O'Neal and Mrs. Hadfield's green light. Our PTC was able to fund the buses for that day and we took about 220-ish first, second, and third graders to the Schubert Theater in Boston. I would not have even considered it without the team we have here, the teachers and staff that went with us. Were phenomenal. The kids had a blast. I think for a lot of them, that was obviously their first experience being in a theater like that. Peter and his brother Paul did an amazing job, obviously. We had a lot of fun. We even had one of our second grade students get up on stage, ask a question of Peter. And it was just a really great experience all around, so thank you for that. This summer, we also applied for a residency with Safe and Supportive Schools through the Leslie Institute for Trauma Sensitivity. That was with the help of Mr. Cersei. And so there, with Joe Ruscuccia and his team, presented at a faculty meeting earlier this year. We've been working with them this year to kind of just calibrate and better formulate and shape our school's understanding of what it means to be a trauma sensitive school. It ties really well with our social emotional learning programming as well as our IMTSS initiatives, so I'm excited for that. We continue with our daily morning announcements here. We have video morning announcements that I put on YouTube every day. We have incorporated our new LGN pledge, which ties in our PBIS mantra of being respectful, responsible, and safe. We've also included more student voices here. We have a lot of our kiddos, our second graders do a rhyming word puzzle each Wednesday called the Hink Pink. Mrs. Tannen, which I have to give her a shout out. She's kind of my executive producer of morning announcements. She comes with ideas and suggestions and we try to add those things as well. This year, we added some of our, I like to call them now, I learned this at MasQ, I love the idea, instead of English language learners, calling them emerging multilingualists. I thought, what a way to frame that for these kids who have a superpower essentially. So Mrs. Apusta has been working with our emerging multilingualists in doing Word of the Week. And last week, the word was hello, so we added in Spanish, Arabic, Portuguese, and Punjabi. And then this week, the word was love, which is appropriate for LGN, Little School Big Heart. So the kids are doing a great job. They send me their clips. I incorporated it into announcements each day. So we do those Wednesdays and Thursdays, whenever they get the videos to me essentially. We're pretty flexible around here. So that's been great. And then, as many of you are probably aware, we've had some traffic concerns in terms of arrival and dismissal procedures here. We met as a team, as an admin team, with our SRO, Mark Robichaud, to try and problem solve and come up with ideas. So right now, arrival is working amazingly well. We're getting more cars off the road. Parents have been really receptive and understanding and helping us out with that. So we're able to unload, get all the cars in and unload by 7:45 at this point, which is the time we're supposed to. It was stretching to almost eight o'clock previously. So that's been great. We're hoping to continue that. Obviously dismissal is a little bit tricky. Today was the best day yet. We didn't have any cars out there until about 1:55. We've asked them not to show up until 2:00 and we're getting a little by those. So all in all, it's been a great start to the year. Our teachers here are amazing. Our students are running into school every day. I've always said, if you get them running into the school building each day and excited to learn, that's half the job done. And we're doing that, so. It's been, continue to be a privilege to be the principal here. I said year two down, got I think 13 more to go. I'm not going anywhere. So thank you.
Awesome. Keep us posted on the traffic issues. I'm gonna actually turn it back over to our chair and just, so warrants and student work.
Alright, I'm just trying to apologize for being late. Thank you for the report. Sorry, I missed the beginning. I'm gonna... Okay, so we have to go back to, did anybody have any questions or comments or anything? No, okay. Alright, so back to warrants? Okay, so I guess that's me. So I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, October 12th, 2023, $484,870.22. And school payroll warrants, October 6th, 2023, $1,224,137.79. Those just in the public record. And then, students, that's me?
Hey guys.
You guys good yet?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so for the JCS, October continues to bring so many fun events and activities. We held our unlikely story book fair this week at the JCS and students loved with so many wonderful new books. The weekend, this weekend is trunk or treat at the YL. All three elementary school SPOs are sponsoring this wonderful event. JCS will be participating in the chartless parade on Sunday. Be on the lookout for the JCS, see total float.
And then from the YL, we just finished up our Hey PTO Scholastic Book Fair, which was a huge success this fall and helped to refill and keep our, keep filling our book vending machine with exciting books, book choices for our students. Friday, October 29th, we have our Hey PTO trunk retreat event, which also has the JCS and LGN PTOs. We have 30 cars, which we lined up in the back of the school for kids to come and go from trunk to trunk to get some candy. It has been sensational, it has been a sensational success the past few years and this year looks even better. It is 6:00 to 8:30 out back of the YL. Mr. Bilawa and Mr. Higgins' trunk is again a student-made creation through Mrs. Kabat and Ms. Cashton, our art and STEM teachers. Students have been putting in work on it during LLC block with their art and tech skills. It should be one of the hits of the evening, besides all the candy, of course.
Alright, and for the NHS, it's been very busy at the high school. Thanks to the Advro School-to-Career Partnership, 22 businesses came to present our 10th grade students about possible careers. Spirit Week has been a huge success, leading up to the revived homecoming dance on Saturday. Students have had Rocker Crocs Day, Barbie Day, and Jersey Day so far this week. Next week is the annual Halloween Caution Contest for students and faculty. Other departments are looking to knock down the English department that has won for the faculty six years in a row. I don't know how lucky they're gonna be with that one. Alright, so and last thing is that the Norton High School Drama Club just announced that they are putting on High School Musical and the shows are gonna be April 5th, 6th, and 7th.
Come see it. It's gonna be really fun.
Yes, from fellow John Muckins.
Alright, that's all we got.
Yep.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys.
Any questions?
I know.
They are very, very good.
Yeah, they are good.
There was something back there, though. I think people had some good ideas. We'll see. We'll see next week.
It'll just be talk. We'll see next week.
Shoot a king, they might miss.
Anybody have anything else? Alright, so Norton High School Special Olympics National Banner recognition.
I would love to invite our staff and students up that are involved with Norton High School Special Olympics banner. Please come on up, whether it's to the table or to the front row. Come closer, closer.
Why don't you guys actually at the table, just so the TV can get you?
So I wanted to take this time to recognize some of our Norton High staff members and students for their hard work, once again earning the recognition from the Special Olympics of a national banner school. I'm going to read just a little blurb from the award letter. It says, "Your school has successfully achieved national standards of excellence in the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. The athletes, partners, students, coaches, volunteers, teachers, staff, and administration at Norton High School have all played key roles in creating a social climate where everyone feels included and respected for who they are. Your school and leadership team are a model for other schools, and we look forward to the new heights you will reach tomorrow and in the years to come." And just thank you to all of our students and staff for really making this an incredible endeavor for our students, making it such a warm and welcoming place. Mrs. Newns has been the spearheaded leader for the Special Olympics offices at Norton High School, but across the district as well. And Mr. Portway and his work with Best Buddies. So everyone is really, really involved and engaged, so I don't know if you guys want to say anything? The different things you're working on this year, because it's been a really great kickoff already.
And how many years have you been doing this? Because I remember one of the first meetings that you came to and then the banner ceremony that we had. So this was our four-year renewal. Oh, wow. That's great. Yeah.
I'll just add, at the high school, we're super proud of our Best Buddies program. This year, we have 120 members, which is one out of every six students in the high school. We are the biggest club in the school. We're super proud of all that we do. We have two different levels of membership so that we can get the busiest students who want to be part of our mission and the students who want to come every single day. So we have affiliate members who come to our monthly meetings, they're part of our advocacy campaigns, they're part of the Special Olympics Day games that we have, and they kind of help us on the greater scale of things. And then we have full members who come to at least one day a week to our LLB program where we're in the gym and we have anything from card games to basketball games to...
Kickball.
Kickball. We had a very fun inclusive and unified kickball game a few weeks ago. Done it twice now outside of the field and it's super fun. Actually, our president right here, Benson, can talk a little bit more about some of the activities they do during LLB.
Yeah, so we have like an officer team of like 10 now. In like most traditional clubs and stuff, they keep it around five. But because we're one of the biggest organizations now, probably bigger than any sports team, I think, too, it's pretty important that we have a bunch of big leadership team working on this. But we have Best Buddies happening in the step room for students, you know, who kind of want a little bit more of a quiet space, a little bit more one-on-one. And then the gym is kind of open to, we do like spike ball, can jam. We switch up the activities. We also talk to our members and see what they want to do. And it's kind of good for them to learn how like we can make something inclusive or we can create a new game to make it inclusive. And I think LLB is a good time for them to really practice, you know, what is it like to be an inclusive individual? But at our meetings and stuff in the day-to-day, we like, we really talk about being an advocate of inclusion, living that out in our normal life. So we talk about, you know, even at lunch, when we see the students all sitting at that table, it shouldn't be, oh, let's go sit with them. It's, you know, we invite them to sit with us and making sure that it's a safe place for them. But I'm very, very proud as president of this organization. We've done so much. And just to see, you know, certain social groups at our school, like, you know, the football players or, you know, the jocks or whatever. But to see them, you know, kind of like, you know, step down from that like, you know, area and come down here. And then they're like seeing like, oh, I can make this connection. I can do something good. And it's just been really, you know, fulfilling and wholesome for us to see that, so.
And we're also partnering with Special Olympics to do like an adjunct Jolly John on December 2nd. So the Jolly John's happening in Boston and we are doing a little off-site Jolly John in Norton at the same time. So be on the lookout for some fundraising QR codes.
Your leadership team, is it kids that are like anywhere from freshman to senior or is it like a certain grade that's mostly the leadership?
We have between grades nine through 12. It's inclusive of students with disabilities and students without disabilities.
Yeah.
And so we got, I think, 20-something applications for officers last year and it was super hard to make those decisions. So we have a really big team, but everybody has a different role that they play, whether it's with the daily LLB programming or planning or out-of-school events like the corn maze we went to a few weeks ago or the movie night we just had. Everybody plays really important role.
Super proud of you guys. Thank you for what you do.
Before they step down, can we just have everybody go around and introduce themselves really quickly? Some of you, we know Benson, I think, is setting the record for most times. Just run around and introduce yourselves real quick if you could.
Nicole Newns, academic coordinator at the high school.
Bobby Portway, Spanish teacher at the high school.
Benson Chang, president of Best Buddies.
Jamie Wall, step-out teacher at the high school.
Alex and Jikris, step-up teacher at the high school. Alex, are you anything to add anything?
I just, I mean, it's been cool seeing the progress that we've made over the years. Like, I started as a para in the step-up program, seven years ago and just seeing where it like, when it was just a little like group of people, it wasn't even a Best Buddies program. It was literally just a group of students coming down during, what was it, SSR at the time? And they would just hang out with the students and play games and stuff and then just building it into like a full program and having like partnerships with the students and then just seeing how Bobby has like expanded it and everything and what Nicole's done for the Unified Sports and the leadership in the school has just been, it's been cool to see it, how much it's expanded over the years.
How many unified sports do we have now? Is it still just track and basketball?
Two, yeah. And there's basketball.
Is there ways to expand?
Um, not really school-wide yet. We can add a bocce team, which we hope at the high school, but I think that's through the principal's leadership group, but not through the MIA. So we'd have to look into how to do that. But those are like the two MIA sports right now. A lot of community programming.
I mean, I think just to add a quick thing to, you know, the work of this group, I think, and colleagues across the state of Massachusetts, New England, Rhode Island. We've actually seen at Bryant, we have like Special Olympics College now. So we're actually, we have a team who competes against URI and Roger Williams, you know, in the unified sports world, which, you know, is fairly new, but it's because of people like this, you know, who've kind of got it, who've started at the high school level. And now those, you know, 18, 19, 22-year-olds, I think we go all the way up to 30, you know, of actually bringing those students back into, you know, the college campuses, you know, and kind of giving that in that atmosphere as well, which is, you know, kind of really starting to take off. We've been in discussions with the National Special Olympics from what we've done in Rhode Island, you know, kind of making it, like, kind of using us as an example. Like, hey, how can we actually even expand this further, you know? So, you know, what you guys do is very important. And, you know, like I said, it does, it works its way up, you know, and hopefully the more, the more we can do, the better. So, great job.
I need to build up what you're saying, Nick. I had the opportunity of going to Nicole and Jem McAllister from the YL to go to the first Unified Conference this year. And I sat at a dinner table originally and everyone was like, oh, where are you from? And I was, I'm from Norton. They're like, ah, Nicole Fantastie. We're trying to be like Norton. Every Norton's doing really, really great stuff. But with the leadership and, I mean, Mr. Hayward that has gotten the middle school to be a banner school as well, there's three unified sports down there. We're actually working towards becoming a unified district so that we're starting it at the, actually, one of our speech therapists here at the LG is starting a program. So we're really working to make it a, starting even earlier than that high school age and starting with our younger friends to really create that, make that community.
And I can tell you that as a, you know, director of pupil personnel, when I talk to other districts about all of this, whether it's the Unified, the Best Buddies, the jealousy is unreal. Unbelievable. You go to the Unified Basketball Game and, you know, we have like, what, four rotations, I think, of students? And a lot of the other schools are lucky to have one or two subs. So this is a credit to the students, number one, but I think the staff, it really does create that kind of environment. And, you know, the leadership of young men and young women like Benson and so many others, really taking that lead. They're gonna hear from them more than they're gonna hear from us and we're really lucky and Norton should be really proud of that, that these kids and the staff are here, because like I said, other districts are really jealous, which is a great thing to hear when we go out and speak to folks, so.
And I would urge you, if you had the opportunity, to go to one of the Unified Games, either basketball or bocce bowling.
Yeah, bocce's a lot of fun.
They're really, it's, it's an incredible feeling to go and see the support on both sides. The students cheering for each other on both sides of teams. It's a great uplifting experience and a lot of fun. So if you have the opportunity, I'd suggest heading out there. You know, people are heading to Senior Night Football here tonight.
Again, I just wanted to come up and thank you all personally for the work you do.
Thank you, guys. I mean, really what you've done and what you've built is, I mean, I can see why other communities would be jealous, but we certainly are proud of you. You make our community proud, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Vote to approve Norton Middle School deal trip to New York City, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, yes.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Before I get into the New York City information, with all due respect to our awesome student representatives, I'll give you an update on what's going on at our school because I realized that we did not send that in today, so I'd be happy to share with you some of the things that are happening at the middle school. So tomorrow, we anticipate chaos of the best kind. We are holding our annual Halloween Activity Night tomorrow night and we fully anticipate at least 350 students to be present, so we're looking forward to that. It's going to be a lot of fun. It usually is one of the highlights of the year for a lot of our students, for our sixth graders. They are very excited because it is their first opportunity to really have that kind of event at school. So definitely looking forward to that tomorrow evening. Last week, we did a wear pink to support breast cancer awareness day and we had some awesome participation. Some great pictures came out of that, some great participation, lots of pink all over the building. And it hits home, especially this year in our building, because we had a couple of different faculty members who have been dealing with some of those issues related to that terrible disease. So it really hit home and a lot of the kids really stepped up, so it was awesome to see. And then from the sports desk, what I would say is that we are very proud of all our sports teams, particularly our volleyball team, who started off rough this year and, you know, it's the first year we've had the program and they were, you know, put on a great, put forth a great effort. And finally, it's paid dividends. They won their last two matches. They won the other day and they won again today, we just found out. So very happy for them because I know those girls are really, you know, putting a lot out there and so, you know, very pleased to see that outcome for them, so. Just a couple of quick things from middle school. So the real reason we're here this evening, though, is to seek your approval once again for our New York City trip. This is gonna be the sixth year we've done a New York City trip. For those who have heard this spiel before, you know that many years ago, under a previous administration like Stan Cox and Brian Ferrari, who are kind of legendary in this town, they ran a New York City trip out of middle school for many, many years. And times were much different back then, but the gist of the trip is still the same. It's a one-day trip. We go down. It was a long trip and I know that, you know, Mrs. Cohen came to join us and it was, you know, it's a long day, but it's a fun day. And I think the kids really get a tremendous amount out of it. And so our agenda is basically gonna be the same that we did in last year. We're going to take buses to New Haven. We're gonna ride the metro north into Grand Central Station. And then from Grand Central Station, we walk up to the Rockefeller Center area. We go up to the top of the Rock Observatory, which is just awesome for the students. They get out there and they just see the whole city spread out before them. It just, you know, you get, wow, you know, it's a universal kind of awe and it's, you know, for groups of eighth graders to have awe, universal awe, is not an easy thing to make. I just, you know, we see them every day and they're not impressed by a lot. And so for that to happen is just very cool. And then we eat lunch in Rockefeller Center and then we travel on to St. Patrick's Cathedral, because it's right across the street, more or less. A great iconic place in New York City to go visit. There's a lot of history in that building and it's an important site for the city, especially in relation to 9/11 and all sorts of things, you know, lots of important events happened there after post-9/11. And then we travel over to the MoMA, Museum of Modern Art, which is, you know, obviously a great museum to its own right, very well-known internationally. Lots of excellent works of art there. We had some of the, last year, we had seen Starving Night, the Van Gogh that was there at the time. And, you know, some other really impressive works of art like The Screen, other things that you may have heard of it. So that's a great experience for the students as well. And then after that, we allow the students to go down to Times Square and they walk around Times Square and, you know, obviously there's parts of Times Square that, you know, we can't control and there's a little bit of chaos and madness down there, but the students all know Times Square. They love Times Square because this is what they see on New Year's Eve. They're like, oh, Times Square. And this is what they see, you know, on TV and all these other things. So they really enjoy that experience and they're very much looking forward to it. Then we do dinner and get on the train and come back. Hopefully, we're back by around 1:00 in the morning. That's always our goal, so. You can't control traffic, obviously. That's usually, usually what happens, so. So just, you know, seeking your approval and, you know, I know our kids are looking forward to it. We haven't told the kids about it yet. If anybody was watching, you may know about it now, but, you know, but we will, we will tell them, you know, we will make the official announcement to them in January, so.
What day of the week? This is a Friday, right?
So Friday, May 31st is our date. And I always try to check with Mr. Dolan, Mrs. Vannar at the high school to make sure that it is not that Friday where graduation is being held, because obviously we don't want to create that kind of question. So I checked with them and I believe that we're good with that Friday, May 31st date, so.
It was definitely a fun trip. I love being a chef. One of the highlights of being able to go with my son, although my group grew to like 20 kids. But it was, yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, lots of travel, you know, they all want to go.
Yeah, it was a fun trip. They all want to go to the M&amp;M's store. That's where we went, yeah, for a long time.
Yeah, lots of sugar.
Yeah, it is a great trip. Anybody have any other questions or no? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Norton Middle School trip to New York City? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Have one?
Alright.
Alright, discussion, vote on nurse substitute rate. So when we met the last time, we had talked about bringing Mrs. Dorian Brown, who was our coordinator of health services, back to answer some of the questions that you've had. Unfortunately, she had a government family this week and is not able to be here. So Christine and I can discuss these with you or we can table it to November so that she can be here with us.
Did she, did she want to be here to do it?
I think she was really hoping to, you know, kind of talk about some of the challenges. We have had some issues this year with some of our own staff members going through health issues and specifically some of our nurses. And that's been, we've needed substitutes a lot more often than we have in the past, so that was part of the things that she wanted to share with you.
So maybe we table it and let her, I mean, what do you guys think? If she, yeah, if she wanted to speak to it, then I don't want to, you know, have it tonight if she were to have it.
I mean, unless it's a pressing issue that needs our attention right now. I think our biggest thing was just the jump, which she probably explained, so I guess it's pressing.
She did explain the jump. So the 210, so it was the 125 to the 210, so the supplement of the $85 was gonna come through the grant. I got additional information. It wasn't going to take away, I think, one of the questions was whether it was going to take away from other pieces to them or not. It wasn't. We mapped out together. We sat down. The $19,000 was a little high, but not much. We came to like $15,000 because she does need so much nurse coverage. The 210 also is $30 an hour. So if you looked at some of the comps, that's, that's the minimum to pull RN is in mass is around 50.
Now, would every substitute nurse be needed for the full day typically? Or like, for say, like, I assume we have to like send a nurse on this field trip, for example, like if it's a second grade trip and it's only like three hours, would that save us a little money in the long run? Because it'd only be like a half-day rate for like a field trip?
I mean, ideally, yes. It potentially could. I mean, we could do it as an hourly rate if we wanted to do that instead. Something like the New York Field Trip, that is going to be a huge cost for us because it is such a long day. As you know, you leave at like 5:00 in the morning, you're home at 9:00. leave at like five o'clock in the morning, you're home at one o'clock the next day. So that's, that's going to be a huge cost for us to make sure that we have equal access for all of our students. The teacher workday is a seven-hour day. So typically, the nurses are on that same schedule. Students are in the building for six and a half hours. So 15 minutes before the students come, and then 15 minutes after. I, I think typically on a, on a regular workday where they're covering, it would be the seven-hour workday. But when you look at it from the perspective of the $30 an hour, I think it's a little bit, a different thought process.
Do we get any historical data of like what we're kind of maybe projecting? And again, I know that obviously it's kind of very year by year, but if we have like a clearer picture on like, are we talking $15,000, $30,000 kind of, do we have anything on that end? Of how many nurses, I guess, substitute nurses we're gonna go through a year?
So last year, the last few years, our data would be a little bit different, because we had seven nurses since COVID in 2020. So those two extra nurses were able to cover for their counterparts when they may have been out sick. So it's not an accurate representation of what we may have spent in the years past. We're pretty sure that the $19,000 is an overshot in terms of how much we're putting to the side. But we also definitely want to make sure that we have enough money there to be able to support the nurses. As you know, as I mentioned to you in my weekly update last week, substitutes are a real concern for us right now. And that is finding substitutes just to be in classrooms. Substitute nurses, we have one person who's currently on our list that is able to come and, and help and support us. I think we got another applicant the other day as well. So it's, we have very minimal options.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with.
I guess my only other question, what happens when the grant runs out?
She did not foresee it running out.
Okay.
This particular one goes for at least another five or six years. That's definite. So it's, it's only been increasing each year. So when I asked her that question, she didn't think, she didn't foresee that happening anytime soon.
Any other questions? So maybe if we're ready, we just vote on it tonight, and then if she ever wants to come back and update us on how things are going or whatever, you know, if she wants the ability to speak, you know, we would love to have her. And obviously, if you will, it's to her family. Are you guys ready to?
I would, I would make a suggestion that if we're voting, if we feel like we're gonna vote to approve it, then we should move forward with it. If we're going to vote against it, we should allow her the chance to speak.
Agreed.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too. Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so.
I'm good to vote.
All right. So then, do we have a motion to approve the increase in the nurse substitute rate? Is there a second?
Second, sorry. Sleeping over here.
All those in favor?
That was, that was a 210, correct? Sorry.
Yes, yes.
If I just, as a, it's a general side, when we're, when we're receiving data like this, as I was looking through today, I was, I was looking at, it would be helpful if it's, if it's all on the same baseline. So rather than give us some hourly, some, and I know that some people come in hourly, what I would suggest is that that just equated, yeah, equated to whatever like our six and a half hour day is and say, this is equivalent to this. Just, it's easier, because I'm going through it, I'm like, oh, how, you know, where do we stack up? And I'm looking, I'm like, oh, okay, 125, oh, 30 bucks an hour. Now I'm doing math. Like, it's a lot easier if I can rip through and say, okay, we're like bottom third.
It's not like you don't do math all day. No, but to your point, though, like when you say $30 an hour, that makes more sense than when we look at it and that broad too.
Yes. Okay. All right, discussion and vote on athletic fields fee increase. So what we had previously was no, still, still no charge for the group one, which is that in-town nonprofit. And group two, we had one 75 an hour, and we are asking for an increase by $25 this year to make it $200 an hour. We made this change last year in January, and this will be effective January 2024. We're asking the little bit more supplemental funds, because we aren't charging any of the other groups. And the comparables are still the same from last year. We didn't see much difference from last year's research. But that's where our baseline is coming from.
What other communities charge for it?
We, Aaron and myself, we looked, and it's all over the place. Some include custodians, some do not. Most of the time, they do charge, even if it's minimal, for the in-town groups. So even though if it seems a little bit lower for the out-of-town, that's, they're making up the difference. So for example, Taunton's for-profit groups is 350 a game, but it includes, it might include an event coordinator and cleanup. And their, and their Taunton youth is 132. So it might be a little bit less per hour, but they make up for it on either end.
So Nick, Nick and I probably have a better hand on this than I do. But I, I always felt we were kind of low anyways, to be honest with you. I think, you shouldn't say always, because it hasn't been in a while, but, but when we started out, I was kind of like, oh, that seems low a little bit. Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, I think one thing we need to be aware of, I, I mean, I like driving out of the parking lot, picking up my kid and seeing other groups. But one thing that I also see, sometimes it's weather blowing over trash cans, sometimes it's just human, you know, lack of human decency, I guess. There's trash being left behind on the fields. So, and I hate to say this negatively, but even our in-town group friends, they have to police the fields after their players and parents, or they're going to see fees at some point, because that's the inevitable. You know, we, these fields are in great condition. We like renting them out. We like being good community neighbors. But we also have to get that reciprocated to us and, and cleanup and just general decency to, you know, it's a, I always, you know, tell people, I don't go in your house and throw my bottle on your floor. So we have to make sure that we put that up to these groups, that they have to clean up after themselves, or they could face some fees.
I don't want to get too much of a how they're being run, but I wonder, do we feel like that's because we're charging a custodial fee? They feel like, oh, these guys clean up after us?
This is just, you literally see bottles littered on the ground.
Do you know what I mean? Like, I wonder if they, if they feel like the custodial fee justifies that somehow?
We're not charging a custodial fee. Only if they, only if they request it, and then choosing to open up a building. This is, this is the teams out there on their own.
All right, we're not charging a custodial, custodial fee right now, or we plan to.
Most days we don't. In like our high schools, we don't, we don't have custodial. I think grounds guys are, they're going to spend about an hour each one driving around the fields, picking up trash barrels.
Okay, so I'm looking at, thinking of it as custodial fee for group one and two, that's going forward, not currently.
That's, haven't we always just done that as kind of needed?
Yeah.
So.
So.
I'm, yeah, I'm not sure that that's accurate, because somebody told me the other day that they would be in charge of custodial fee or something. And I said, well, you have to be, because we have to have a custodial.
Inside, it's contractual that we don't have custodian for events, for the inside bathrooms.
Okay, maybe it was inside.
Or inside, it's been sort of on a need basis.
Okay.
I just to clarify, custodial fee is internally use only, not field rental, unless, unless it's like a tournament.
Obviously, if it's a huge event, we'll hire a custodian to go around throughout the day and empty the trash barrels, because the league, a fellow throughout the day, kind of supervise parking and stuff like that. If it's a huge event, if it's just a game or a practice.
Like the soccer club on a Tuesday night.
When you know, any sport is out there, we're not charging them that, that custodial fee. They're policing themselves.
Gotcha. And I, and I think to Dan's point, is we, I think, and again, I said, I know you're baseball board, but soccer and all the other things in town, I think we need to make it a very well-known thing, and whether it's from Wade and Aaron and meeting with these boards, either individually, a scheduling aspect, like, you know, I remember we had a little issue last year with baseball leaving crap everywhere allegedly, you know, like, that needs to be from us, you know, from what's in our policy, saying, hey, this is, you're using our field for free. We're not gonna charge you the custodial fee. However, this is what we need you to do when you're done. And then if that doesn't happen, there was a policy signed off by the league president or whoever it may be, and then we can say, not, no one's gonna get blindsided. You didn't do what you needed to do. Wade had to send a guy around for two hours cleaning up after you. So now they need to charge you that $52 and 59 cents.
Yeah, 100%.
The problem is, we can't, we also gotta be realistic here and say, hey, if they don't know the rules, and they don't know the policies and procedures behind what's happening, like Dinesh kind of said, if they're kind of confused on, hey, I saw someone there, I didn't know, we had to pick up the trash afterwards. We need to be very specific to what we're saying with these fields. Because I, again, I couldn't agree more. But you don't want to start charging people fees and then have it come, oh, the schools are trying to do this, this and this. Let's trust the people in town. You know, the people who are on these boards are generally good people who are volunteer positions, you know, making sure they're cleaning up after themselves. They can hold their coaches and their parents accountable. And if we need to jump in and say, hey, no, what, no more of this, then that's where we drop out of the fee. And quite frankly, I wouldn't even be mad if we put an event coordinator on. You know, we have a custodian on to clean up all your trash, and now the event coordinator is gonna be kind of in charge of what's happening down there, you know?
I agree. I think we need like some kind of an agreement with these groups, you know, just going forward and kind of setting expectations. But I think as a group right here, right now, we can say to anyone watching, whatever time, if you see trash, pick it up. Like, I mean, it's embarrassing that we need to remind people to do that. But that's where we're at, state in our world, but.
Yeah. And it's even like the chairs, remember the chairs were on the field at one point too. And it's like, you know, that can, I think, I feel like that could all be kind of prevented. And I think there are good people in town, you know, who would say, hey, can't have your chairs out here. You can send that email out prior, you know, and kind of forward that way. But we, we need to also give them what our expectations are.
Yeah, I mean, logically, looking at the multipurpose field and the high school track, no spectator should be inside those black fences. Like, whether we need a sign or not, no spectator should be inside there. I mean, every official, every game I've been to, whether it's a high school event or something, you're not in that area. And I think whether or not we need to invest in, you know, spend a little bit of this rental money on a couple of signs, no spectators allowed within fenced-in area, then that is all prohibited, because inside the fenced-in area, where the, we can't have, you know, the, the chairs on the turf, because it will create damage. You know, having spent mu, many years at the turf stadium in Mansfield, there is a bright blue sign, no, you know, no chairs on the turf in area. So everything inside the fences is turf, besides the track, which you also can't have chairs on. So if we have to put a little, you know.
That state, state of those, those vacations inside field, or chairs in the list of sun wall seats includes and all that.
Yeah. And I think like another piece of this is like that scheduling meeting. And I know it's gonna take time for someone to do it, but like, to sit down, face to face, hash out, like, hey, all right, here's the high school laid-out spring schedule, you know, all right, next, we're gonna go through the youth groups. If those teams aren't ready and the youth groups aren't ready to use those fields, you're getting skipped. Then we're going down to rentals, you know. We have to have some type of a pecking order too, because, you know, I, and again, I know baseball kind of used some Friday nights and Saturdays and whatever, which is great, that's wonderful. But we're also, quite frankly, could be holding the schools back in terms of renting that space out, because we're the last ones to jump on in April. You know, that's gotta be done. Northern baseball, you guys are going Sunday mornings. Soccer, you're going Friday nights. We're renting it out, because no, no rental's gonna go, oh, we'll take next week. They want the thing scheduled out, you know, six months in advance, you know?
We know, and maybe you know this from baseball, and, and I, I don't want to kind of get into the weeds on this, but does every youth sport have an alternative? Like, for example, if someone approaches us with a half-check to have like a soccer tournament on a weekend, can, can they be bumped? Or like, like, would they be able to be bumped? Like, and I don't want to do that, but if the, if the tournament comes to us in January and says, I want it for this weekend, and that baseball isn't ready to do their schedule.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would depend, I think it would depend on, honestly, each youth sport, if you will. But I do think, like, we did like baseball opening day out there. Like, if we bumped that, we are going to get killed from PR standpoint, you know? So that would be, that's not good. But I think if it was a, you know, we had a six o'clock game that was scheduled down there, and we could move to Burchell or, you know, Chase against them wherever else. I mean, yes, we've, we've played with all the fields, you know, so we haven't had them forever. But I do think, like I said, I just think we just need a little, and again, it's year one. Last year, field's got, you know, online a little later than we expected and everything else.
We'll figure it out.
I think as we do this, I just think we just need to be a little bit more direct of, you know, what, what we want to do, you know, to protect the fields, obviously, and then make sure everybody in town is aware of policies, expectations, procedures, and all that fun stuff.
Do we have anything like that, like a rental agreement?
Yes, we've actually, we've actually started one and it's almost done. So we'll present that to you.
Perfect. All right.
I think that's huge.
Building our rental agreement, we're working on with that for each girl. Really different entity, because it really is.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, the only other suggestion I would have for the per hour, the per hour is still cheap, to be honest with you, for, for what fields we have. I do think, because we are still new, I think it's still good to kind of be a little low, because you're stuck drawing a little bit more interest. My only suggestion, what we did, which I thought worked out pretty well, you, like these huge soccer tournaments, I go six, seven, eight, 12 hours, whatever they go. We used to do like a per hour up through four hours, and then we knocked it down a little bit. So like, it would be like 175 after four hours. So and then it would be a little cheaper. So if you were doing an eight-hour day, you'd go four hours at 200 bucks or whatever their cost is, you know, and then kind of drop it down. And then it would just be one, hey, we know you're coming. We know you're a big thing. We're gonna throw you a little bit of a bone, give you a little bit of savings, you know. And then, again, I think it just kind of helps with relations and whatnot. And, and for our standpoint, it makes it a lot easier to bring them back. Hey, we can cut you that deal.
As we're going through this process, you know, we've only really been open for funding here at this point. So we're, we're learning as we're going, and we're getting a lot of really great feedback, not just from our community, but from surrounding communities as well. People think the fields are absolutely beautiful, they're well-maintained, and they're a great source of pride. So I think that maintaining them and bringing in the funds to kind of keep us going in that direction is definitely needed. And we can, as always, keep coming back to it and adding it for a good place.
Wade, not to put you on the spot, but do you know, do we have any big events planned that, that anyone signed up for?
We can do the baseball tomorrow, which is for a Thanksgiving invitation. And that kind of, I think is the next point. Having the two fields really, like, machine game, having two fields really gives us some flexibility. So we really have the luxury of scheduling some of these on the big field, you can switch it over, we can move it. So we've really been lucky when it comes to schedule conflicts, and even with weather coming in last minute, we've been able to kind of move some people around. I think we've done a really good job keeping most of the community happy. Everybody really getting on there. And, and our third party, they're just, they're ecstatic to be here. They, they absolutely love the facility, and they, they love the price. And I, I think, I mean, going up $25 an hour is, is really not gonna affect them.
Thanks, Wade.
Anybody have any else? All right. So do we have a motion to vote on the athletic field increase as written?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Try to beat Dinesh, he was too quick.
Thank you. Capital approval discussion?
So we have a few things to bring back to you, based on conversations that we had a few meetings ago and the vote we had at town meeting the other night. So Wade, I'm gonna turn it over to you in terms of the fire systems at Norton Middle School.
So I, I apologize for missing that, that meeting that we discussed capital at. As you know, through town meeting, capital was approved. Late this afternoon, we got a hard copy, legit quote that came in. I had a quick quote. It was noncommittal. It was just through email. They didn't come out looking at the school, but it came in really high. This would be to go to a hybrid system, a universal system, where anybody can work on it, we can get parts anywhere. Help is in three of our buildings, they're in three of our elementary buildings. They work with our, closely with our fire department, and they are, they're, they're really great partners of ours. They hit me with a hard quote today that, that I, I think it's worth discussing, and I think it's worth entertaining. So as you know, Siemens, we can't go out and get three quotes. They're the only ones that work on that product. That quote is $127,000, which we got through capital to change out all the throats, the pull stations, all, all the smoke detectors, heat detectors, all heat detectors and all that. But we'd still be tied to them, and only them. So through your suggestion, going out and grabbing a quote, Help came back today with a quote for a total redo. It would be eliminating all Siemens products, getting it out of the middle school and installing their product, which is Notifier brand, for $153, paid $44.
That's a really good, good even. I thought it was.
We were all in shock, actually.
And I can't thank them enough, because we went, there's 606 touchpoints to this system. So we went through this entire system. We walked the middle school, we touched everything, we went through everything. It was, it was a lot of work to get this quote done, but I thought it was important to get it here, before we actually made a decision. And I'm not sure where.
And just to, and just to clarify one more time, we are not beholden to them afterwards. The pieces are generally universal, you said, right?
These, I can go to any supply electrical house to buy these products, they're not.
Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
Yeah. So with Siemens, everything comes off of their brands. Like, they have to program every unit. With Universal, it's plug and play, kind of like your house. So it's, it gives us much more flexibility for where we can buy the product, which is cheaper generally. So it's, it gives us much more flexibility for where we can buy the product, which is cheaper generally. And it also gives us flexibility, uh, on what contractor we want to use. Obviously, it helps them with the district for a very long time, so, um, we're very happy with them. Um, I, I see us, you know, staying with them unless we, you know, something changed, so.
And then with, I think I'm trying to remember here, with, uh, Siemens, we didn't have the electrical work.
That is correct.
The help builds in the electrical work?
Yes, they do. Um, the only thing that help did not, this 153, 844 does not include would be the electrical permit fees and the fire permit fees, which generally a wage.
Wave, correct.
Without help from the friends at town hall.
And then that, that's probably shouldn't have this in front of me, what is the Siemens quote, it was 127?
127.
127, and I figured the, uh, I estimated, um, the electrician's cost at four to $6 per device with two workers, so I was anywhere between $5,000 and $8,000 for additional work. So you'd have to add that cost to the 127, um, for Siemens to get, uh, in and update all of their devices. Help would come in, remove all Siemens devices and do this. There could be some overtime costs because I'm not sure, we'd have to work closely with the fire department. We'd probably try to do it during a vacation week or, or maybe summer vacation because we wouldn't want anybody in the building. Um, and then we just, you know, we, we, there'd probably be some overtime costs on our end if it just to keep the building open for fire watch and such.
It would definitely be a longer process, it's a much, much bigger project, right? So we would have to take a look at when it would be able to be done. But I think because we use help at all three of our elementary buildings, they are used to working in Norton. They like working in Norton, they like working with Wade, um, and, uh, his contact put a lot of time and effort into getting this into a quote that could potentially be manageable for us.
So I guess, uh, what's, I assume the high school, the LC, any school is not on with help yet?
Yeah, so high school still has Siemens, um, that's a 2013 panel and ISO, that, that's the upgraded equipment. Unfortunately, we are tied to them unless we decided to, to pull a project like this, but there's no need to do that. I mean, ISO is running and it's fine, I think that would be probably for another committee, probably another facility that I have to worry about, um, years from now. I, I can't say enough about help, um, you know, Siemens is a, is a great product, um, but personally, I don't like being tied to, to one contractor and, and, you know.
Seems like a racket.
So, you're looking at an extra 16 grand from what we got. We knew we were going to have to pay the electrical, electric, uh, electrician inspector, um, install anyway, which we were saying was called around eight, so for an extra eight grand.
Well, it's, so it's 153 and 127, I think that's 26, is the difference correct?
Then we'd have to pay the electrician.
Right, so that's, so it's 26 minus eight.
Sorry, sorry, I said 16, you're right, math is hard.
Yeah, no.
Yep. Yes. Math is hard.
So that's an 18.
For athletics.
Right, right, yeah, 18.
Incorrect.
I taught second grade, so I have to work really well with those tall numbers. So I mean, ultimately, we would have to look at options for financing the other 18. We can't go back to town meeting and, you know, at this time, we'd have to wait until the spring. The benefit of having the capital money is we have all year suspended, um, so we don't have to do this project right at this moment. We can, um, you know, take a look at where our, um, facilities revolving account kind of comes in and where we are. Um, but it would be about a difference of 18,000 that we would need to take care of.
So.
Nope, sorry.
I, well, I wanted, I guess my own personal clarity. When we get X amount per capital, every, is everything earmarked for each project? So like, for example, if we resurface the gym and it's five grand less.
Yeah, I can't correct that.
So when you look at the, um, the warrant, all four of our items are actually lined up separately? So we have the $127,000 for this project, we have the 35 for the gym floors, we cannot move those, um, from project to project. Yeah.
So if we're, if we're looking to do this in the summer, though, could we try to do the difference for the spring town meeting? To put that into capital for the spring?
We certainly could. Um, I think the important thing for us all to realize as well is that we still, because it's over $100,000, we still need to get two more quotes.
Absolutely.
Can I, can I ask?
It's just, it's extremely time.
Yeah.
Um, comprehensive because Wade brings them, like, they look at every single.
Of course.
They have to.
Can I, can I just ask, so the Siemens is, is cheaper, um, but we're tied into Siemens. Do we have data that tells us that not being tied into them would be cheaper on the back half?
No, all, I mean, the only, the only, the only thing I could tell you is it just, it gives you more of an option to purchase both mechanics and product.
Yeah.
With Siemens, if they come to us with a contract and say that, that's 127,000 dollars, that's what you have to pay. And so the situation that we're in now, um, the middle school gym beam detectors, three out of four are out. I, I can't just go to any electrical supply.
Yeah, no, I get, I get the, I get the, I get why the question came up originally. I'm just trying to determine if there's actual data to support the idea that we should pay more upfront.
So the other piece too.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying like, it, I, I, I'm not looking to say, you know, well, I think it probably is, like, I, I'd rather be fairly confident.
So the $127,000, when we look at it, the cost per item is, is only the nine loops?
Exactly.
Or only six loops?
Nope, it's nine loops, it's 385 devices.
Nine loops. And how many loops do we have total?
Nine.
So we're replacing all the loops with Siemens or just the ones?
We're replacing all the loops, so helps, so help would come in, so the, to answer your question, the panel, the Siemens fire panel in 2017, we upgraded that, that was for $39,000.
Correct.
That was the panel. At the time, we had a quote for $55,000 to replace all the devices, which are all the, they're all the building. We, we put it on capital, it kind of got kicked down the road a little bit, and that price just kept increasing. After COVID, that price just went skyrocketing, it just went nuts. Plus, I think maybe they were a little frustrated with us because it was so many years down the road and they kept telling us to upgrade this and we just couldn't get it through. So with help, they're going to remove all of Siemens stuff, so that, that fire panel that we installed in 2017.
So the scope of, the scope of the project is larger, and that's why, okay.
That's right.
Well, and like, because you're replacing the entire, whereas Siemens doesn't have to replace the panel now because it's already updated as of 2017 or 16, whatever, help's coming in and putting in a whole new panel, too. So that's, if we were doing apples for apples here, help would actually be cheaper because you wouldn't have to have a give or take 30, $40,000 fire panel.
You know, I think the other thing, too, is what we can't quantify is Siemens could come in at three years and say, oh, this is obviously have to.
Yeah.
If that's what happened.
So that's the problem with being tied.
I think data, what I do have the data is, is the hourly rate for the technician for help is a, a lot cheaper than Siemens hourly rate. The yearly, um, inspections, they come up quarterly for us and they do inspections throughout, throughout the building. That's a lot cheaper with help. So that, that money, we save kind of right off the bat, uh, by, by having, by having a, a, a universal or hybrid system as opposed to being locked into that one corporation. And it seems has been hard to get out there lately. I mean, I, I think, you know, they're, they're one company and they service all their product and they only have so many technicians. Where if I called help and they couldn't get here fast enough, I could call somebody else, and I can't do that now, I don't have that luxury.
And I might be wrong here, but couldn't we just have a, we can hire any bid, have someone come in and bid this and to, let's say we, let's say whatever, four of them are failing. We could have any electrician come in who's certified to work on fire and let them replace.
And.
It doesn't have to be. Correct, correct. It's just obviously it has to be certified and everything else, but like, it does free you up that, hey, XYZ is broken, go out and get three bids, take the lowest bid and make the most sense, whatever it may be, and now we fix it, you know? Compared to, hey, Siemens, we got to call you, get you out here, schedule, you know, whatever else, so.
So we don't have to make a decision tonight because we have.
We have money, we have time.
I'd like to think about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm leaning towards saying the, the non-Seamans, I can't remember the name.
Help.
What's the, what's the other, the name of the system? No sh, national?
Notifier.
Notifiers, sorry.
Notifier.
I'm leaning towards thinking that's probably a better, longer term option. What's a, what's a typical lifespan on these things?
Right, so normally what happens, uh, in the three elementary system, I have smoke detectors here that are almost.
No, I said the lifespan.
Almost as old as the building, um, where, I mean, you, we have to replace it as they go.
Okay.
It, it's recommended that they have a lifespan of 20 to 25 years.
All right, that's, that's more than I would need to worry about that.
So I think we still have to get two more quotes anyway.
I still need two more quotes, I don't expect them to come in lower, but we still have, we'd have to go through the procurement line and get the three, get the three quotes, uh, but that gives us some time as well.
Yeah, I think let's do that.
So let's get the quotes.
And let's circle back, because we don't have to do anything right now.
Correct, well, I think one op, well, not an option, how we are going to fund this if we're not going to go to town meeting. You know, we're looking at it $26,000, you know, what, what's our fallback plan at town meeting?
So, once we have the three quotes, we can come back, um, that will also give us, will be pushed out a little bit more. We can take a look at where facilities is at that point, where our revolving accounts are, what we're bringing in, um, you know, what our rentals are. We can also, we'll also have a better idea of kind of our staffing.
Yeah, let's see what we're at.
We can check it out a little bit.
Let's not, let's not take out a loan application yet.
And we, spring town meeting, we typically don't have to have your warrants in, they're probably somebody else, so we do have to.
Well, I think it would also, I mean, it may be better optics, too, if we're going for, you know, yes, you gave us 127, but we need X because we're doing, we're trying to, it's almost like preventative maintenance stuff.
Exactly, yeah. So in 20 years, someone else will have to deal with this.
Well, you know, it's funny you say that, but that's, I hate to say it, that's what this town has done for a long time, it's said, it'll be someone else's problem in 10 years.
Kick the can, correct.
And so we'll, you know, we'll do this for five grand less, it'll cost us 100 grand more in the long run, and that's what we've done, unfortunately, you're absolutely right.
I think you're looking at it very young, even at 15, and they got to be here for a lot more than 15 years.
I just look at it.
So, I guess my question, when we go out to bid, essentially that bid is going to be a full replacement. So Siemens, we can already know is going to be probably double what it is on paper, just for the work.
If we decide to go with Siemens, we have no choice, like that's the only quote we can get, because they're the only ones, there's no other company to go out and get a quote from. Like, there's just, they're, they're the only ones, so that 127, there's nothing to compare it to because I'd have to call them and to program everything and to, to, to buy my product through them anyway, so that's it. And I, I don't, they're a really good product, they're a really good product. I, I don't, I don't want to bash the system, but I also don't know if we have as much time as the summer because of the gym situation over there now, that, that panel's been beeping for, I think, as long as Shug has been here or something. But, but it's beeping every single day, we, we have to do something. It got through in capital, I think the people in town expect us to do something, so I think it's, it's something that I don't want to wait too long for, but I will grab the other quotes, uh, we can have that discussion.
All right, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Thanks, Wade.
Yeah, thanks Wade, you gave your work on that, um, athletic complex outstanding items.
Okay, so this, um, agenda item was requested to put on the agenda for tonight, um, to discuss some healthy outstanding items, um, that were specifically the giant dirt, um, that was sitting out back and, um, behind the Yale school for several amount of time. Um, so we have a few different things to share with you tonight. Wade, do you want to start with your, um, just notes and then we'll go through some of the other things that we have left?
Sure, um, I'll try to read this quick. Uh, so this is, this is kind of my regulation, the timeline of, of events that happened here. During one of our athletic complex weekly meetings with Yale, it was asked if we could, uh, if we could have some of the topsoil loom piled up on our property for, for us to use at a later time. The idea was to level off the pitfields and other areas around the district. This was a change order from removing the soil to stockpiling it up, as noted in our meeting minutes from 8:22. The original scope of work called for all topsoil and loom from the multiplex field area to be removed off the property altogether. Lynch did leave behind an estimated 950 cubic yards of dirt that was removed from the multipurpose area, an area that had always proven to be difficult of an area to grow any type of grass. Once the complex was near completion, I contacted DPW and asked if them, I asked them if they could help us move some of the dirt onto the pitfield. After a brief meeting, it was determined that DPW did not have the time nor the resources to help us out. The pile quickly became an eyesore and more importantly, became a hazard to our property. I reached out to Norton's permanent building committee chairperson, asked if they could use the soil for either the new senior center or the town hall. After a few days, I heard back from him and they said they could, uh, not use the soil, that they just didn't have a need for it. I contacted a local contractor and asked if they could move the pile from the area. We received an open handed price quote of $175 an hour to get it removed. Uh, then we contacted a company that came in and gave us a price of $10,000 to $12,000 to remove it. A select board member then reached out to me and asked if we were, had any plans to move the dirt pile at all. Um, that, there was a lot of chatter on Facebook and the community was wondering where the project sat. After I explained the situation to him, he said he'd get back to me, he thought that he knew somebody, local business that could, uh, help us out and remove the soil. He called me back, gave me the name of a contractor, a local contractor, uh, that could help us remove the dirt pile. I contacted the business owner, he came down, looked at the pile and said that he could remove it for us, it would take three to four days, and he'd do it at no cost for us. Already knowing, I asked him if he thought it had any value to the town at all. Like others beforehand, he said no, that it was a mixture of sand, topsoil, gravel and rocks. Uh, it would have to be screened, it would have to be separated, and the time that it would take to do that would be days. On Friday, they completed the project and the removal, uh, on Friday they started the project and they finished it on the following Tuesday, 7/25/2023. Uh, I sent pictures to, uh, both Christine and Dr. O'Neil. I was kind of happy that it was gone, um, we had three or four calls out there with the police, uh, just kids throwing rocks, just kids climbing it, um, having kind of issues next to the new tennis, uh, courts, uh, with big rocks being thrown on the courts. Uh, so I thought it was a big win for us, uh, safety hazard obviously removed at no cost to the district. That's kind of my timeline.
Um, we actually gave you a few more documents tonight as well. Um, you have a large report from Yale, which outlines, um, their process with the dirt, kind of their recollection of where it came from, how much it was, and, um, also all of the dirt tests that they did throughout the project. It's actually, um, a very comprehensive report, um, it was kind of a lot to process. When you go through and you're looking at, okay, what this is mean between silt and sand and light ground, grave sand and everything else, there's a lot of pictures in there as well. Um, some of these tests were hand excavated, some were done, um, by the Norton DPW. So there are, um, this is a lot of information for us as well. Um, and then we also shared with you the minutes from the construction meetings that took place in the summer of 2022. So we were really told that this gigantic dirt pile did not have a value, and we were given quotes, um, of it costing us to be taken away. So we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about the process.
Are we under the impression that you did have some huge amount? Why are we talking about this?
It was requested, um, by the committee.
I, I, I'll jump in. I think, uh, first and foremost, I'm the one who brought this on to the agenda. I'm looking at this from a very different standpoint. I think we had a huge dirt pile back there. We were told as a school committee, from former administration, if you will, that that was being used in the pitfield, correct? Didn't get used in the pitfield. We have superintendent now who comes in, obviously it's a whole mess going on and probably isn't really worried about dirt in her first few weeks here. In September, I say, hey, whatever happened to that, that huge mound of dirt out at the thing? I, she replies to me and says, hey, I think it was moved into the pitfield. Come to find out, wasn't moved into the pitfield, it just disappeared. So my issue is, we gave away a pile of dirt. We can sit here and argue semantics and say it was worth $0, it was going to cost us money to remove it, it was worth $100,000. All I know is there's no company and no business in town who's going to come and remove dirt for free if they're not getting something out of it. People just not going to come and move a, for, from this standpoint and Yale's standpoint, a thousand yards of dirt. No one's doing that. Has value to someone, correct? I would assume that's kind of common sense, if you will. I also have, now Yale's saying it's 900, let's just call it 1,000 for sema- semantics. I also heard it was a lot more than that based on our DPW and other people in town who've looked at it at the time saying it was maybe like up to 6,000 yards of it. I don't know, I didn't go out there and measure it myself. However, to me, we had something that the school committee and the superintendent and the administration thought was going somewhere, and then it didn't. So whether we sign off on it, superintendent signs off on it, someone has to have the ability to say, hey, what happened to this and where is it going? You know, and I get things change. We, I was assuming, and Joe Byader also was probably assuming, we could go and dump it into the pitfield because it was decent dirt. I get it, things change, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we were supposed to take off 12 inches, we got to level the field on, now you're down to 24 inches. Now you're getting rocks, debris, and who the hell knows what else is on those fields. However, no one ever brought that to our attention, you know? And my other concern here is, when you just give away dirt, you're looking at it from a standpoint of we're giving away town property. And I don't think we did what we were supposed to do on this in terms of proper protocol of, hey, we're changing this, this is what we need to do, alerting the correct people and then making sure it's public knowledge that town property is being given away. If, if the fire department gave, gave away their jaws of life, or the police department got rid of one of their signs, there's a process in town you have to go through. The select board signs off on it, the town manager signs off on it, the chief. The select board signs off on it, the town manager signs off on it, the chief of police, chief of fire, DPW director, whoever it may be, has to sign off on a process. We need to make sure we're doing the same thing. That dirt disappears, all five of us, I don't know about you guys, but I got, hey, where did that dirt pile go? Obviously, we saw all the banter on Facebook, all five of us go, whoa, we think it went in the pit. No, it didn't, we found out three months later that it wasn't, that it didn't go there. That's a problem. And again, I think from a protocol and a policy standpoint and procedurally and everything else, we can't just, from a town standpoint, we can't just give away stuff. We're, we're, we're always pinching pennies, we're always asking for, you know, more money, we're, we're saying our budget's tight, this is tight, whatever. If that was worth five thousand dollars, five hundred dollars, ten grand, we will never know now, because we simply gave it away. We gave it away, you know? And now granted, maybe, maybe we do.
That's true, we, we can certainly get some sense of what it's worth, I mean, from, both from what's happened and kind of looking forward as well, right? Like, I mean, I just, I am not gonna read this stuff, but just looking at this, topsoil is stripped, stockpile, blah, 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 becomes a property of the contractor. So if the contractor didn't take it, if the contractor said, you want us to leave it there, we'll leave it, and didn't tell you that there was a change in the price, they didn't think there was a value. Because much to your point, they're not gonna just give you something of value without changing what the cost is to us.
But that's, that's my question. My, my question is, did it get phased out of the project because previous administration was saying, hey, we need to cut twenty thousand, five thousand dollars here, ten thousand dollars there, and the company was gonna charge us to remove it? So why did it get cut out?
So.
And why did we, why did we wanna keep it?
Property, well, that's, so my question I guess is, why, why did we not use it for the pitfields?
So ultimately, ultimately it happened, it came up in one of my meetings, and, and I mean, I feel, I feel terrible because this really was my idea, I, I thought this was actually topsoil, and what a wonderful idea, if we could save some of that and put it in the pile.
Yeah, we're not, we're not a living blame.
This is where I'm at, so I, the, the concept of taking this topsoil and putting it in a pile and then us coming in with our grounds crew and throwing it on the pitfield and raking it all down, or the help of the DPW, that was the idea. To your point, the, the contract, the original contract was for Lynch to take all this away. What happened in my opinion was Lynch did that, Lynch took all the topsoil and they took it away, because they could make money with that.
Right, they took what's there.
Then they took the other stuff and said, oh, NPS needs some? Well, instead of us paying to get rid of this, oh sure, we'll give you a pile, if you saw pictures of that rock pile, it was a rock pile.
Right.
We tried, we tried to take some of that and move it to different locations, especially over by the high school where the bleachers are, and we tried to level some, some areas there and try to grow grass on it, we couldn't grow grass on it, it wasn't, it had no nutrition in it, it needed to be treated, it, there was no.
So Wade, I, I just wanna focus you more, because like, the direct question is, why do we not use it for the pitfields? Like, just, what was the?
The only way we could have done it is through the help of the DPW, and when the DPW came out with our quick meeting, he looked at it and said, I don't have the time or the resources to help you with this. And we have a.
Is that because it went from being topsoil to junk soil?
Uh, it's also important to note that our original permit or the original contract that we made, the order of conditions with the Conservation Commission, did not allow us to put anything in that backfield. So we wouldn't need to enhance the scope with the Conservation Committee.
So going back to my point, why would we save a big giant dirt pile and not have the general contractor take it away? We would have never had this issue.
It sounds like we made a mistake.
Yes, that's why.
If I'm understanding you.
I made a mistake, I thought saving it would help the community, save some money, repair the pitfield that needed some repairing.
So this was never.
So then I was looking at a pile of junk, and I thought it was gonna cost the district money, so I, I had a hard time with this.
So can I summarize this real quick? So, so we had a work order, the work order was, all this stuff lost the contractor, they take it away, it's, they're essentially, I hate to say they're charging for it, but it's part of the scope of the project. At some point, you said, hey, can you leave some? They left some. It was crap, someone took it away for free, and here we are today.
Yes.
Is that a fair summation of what happened?
Yes.
And I think, you know, I, I have to say this, I, I do not want Wade to take ownership of this, because Joe was here.
I was just saying, let's put it on Joe, man.
But no, honestly, it was a whole committee, we, we all sat on these meetings, we all were there, right? And, you know, you, you brought up the idea and we all agreed, you know, yes, let's do that.
That's a great idea, and I was sitting there as well, but I think there was probably a lapse in communication between Joe and I in terms of, I, I said to Nick earlier today, I assumed, we all know what happens when you assume this. I did not walk up to the pitfield and we were just thrilled it was gone. So I'm not going to let Wade take ownership of this, because as a superintendent, I should have asked the question, and I did. And so, you know, I told all of you, that's what I thought happened to it, I assumed, again, not a great thing to do, I assumed that, you know, that we took what we needed and put it to the pitfield, and then someone came and took away the rest. So I owe that as a superintendent in not asking those questions.
I, I just wanna chime in with a couple different things. I, I, I don't wanna take a shot at you, but I think you're, you're broad scoping what's town property, dirt is not, in my opinion, I, I don't think soil, it's like, you know, we, we've done plenty of projects in town and nobody complains about soil or rocks or anything else. However, from a different perspective, we are very lucky, this pile did not cost us a lot of money. I routinely was at the tennis courts with my daughter, there was rocks, there was kids sliding down this hill like they were sledding, unattended, unattended minors, which is a whole separate issue. I personally went over and dismissed kids from this because the, the little yellow fake thing means nothing.
That didn't stop them?
And I, I literally saw a child that I thought broke her arm because she bounced off a rock. It was, there was nothing good about this pile. I, I drove by one day, it's gone, didn't even think to ask a question, knew, knew pretty well it wasn't put into the pits, because surprisingly, the pit looks really good because it's not been used.
It's not been used.
Yes, it could deal with leveling out, it's just, it's really, if we're not gonna use it right now, you know, I, I think my, my bigger issue, you know, separate issue is, we kind of, we didn't, we didn't plan very well with that area, because we're down a field for spring sports, and that was something, that's, that's a separate discussion, but, you know, that was one of the things I talked about with the athletic director, I'm like, oh, if we could get rid of this big pile of junk, we could put in another baseball or softball field, or we could have used it for that. So, I mean, I, I, again, I don't think I ever asked the question once the, the pile was gone, other than I, I ran into the athletic director, he's like, yeah, someone took it. I was like, oh, great, didn't think twice about it, didn't think it was a major issue, and, and your points are valid, Nick, but I think this is a really broad definition of what is a town, what's town property and dirt. Was, was the process foiled a little bit with removal and things like that? Yeah. Maybe someone kicked it down the road and, I don't know, I would hedge a bet, I'm not a soil expert, but I don't think anybody made money off of that.
And this is one thing that maybe we, we've learned from this experience and these conversations over the last few days, is that we need to establish a better process when it comes to surplus materials for the district. There is no policy.
I was gonna say, Jen, I, I think also, like, one of Nick's points, and I understand it, was that, you know, the policy for dissolution of property, what is it? And the reality is, is something like a pile of dirt, I, I mean, that's, in all honesty, I don't feel like that falls under our.
Oh, it certainly does.
Our scope. I don't, dissolution of property, I'm not sure it does.
Absolutely does, look at the Mass General laws, I'm telling you right now.
Mass General laws are higher, higher super tight, it's just like four, fourth of eight.
But it's not, not, not from that, not from the school committee standpoint, I'm saying it from the town standpoint, you cannot just give away town property without going through proper protocol. It's, it's, it's written very clear, I'm telling you right now.
So Mass General law, I have it right here, it is good. Mass General law, chapter thirty B, section fifteen, is all about disposition of tangible supply. So there are processes here which talks about if something is no longer useful to the governmental body, if it has resale or salvage value, the process that you're going to go through.
And I believe it's a ten grand, uh.
Yes, it also says for a supply with an estimated value of less than ten thousand, we should dispose of it, of such a pile using written procedures approved by the governmental body. So we were told it had no value over and over again.
Do we have written, like, that's what I'm saying.
We do not have a written policy.
Bingo.
Wait, Gail's, Gail's an engineer. I mean, that's. Are you asking if we have written policy or we have written that and what's, what's the value?
Written policy.
So, um, we do not have a specific policy that deals with the disposal of surplus materials. I shared with you a few other policies today about the maintenance of buildings and grounds, the ethics policy, if we were getting rid of a facility, we have those policies, we do not have something that really structures this.
Yeah, do we tend to have surplus items?
So it happens from time to time to curriculum items.
Of any non, non own value?
Often, often we are the ones that are going to.
And I'm not saying that this was a value, by the way, I'm very serious about the addition of value to this, but.
Often we are the ones that are going to a office that's shutting down and getting desks or chairs for a conference room. Mrs. Winsborough and her tech team are driving to communities to take their smart boards off the walls, so that way if we have smart boards that go out at the middle school, excuse me, at the high school, we have something to, to put back up. We do run into this from time to time when it comes to curriculum materials. So if we adopt a new program, we have a new, we have a program that is being phased out, we often will donate them to other school systems that are still using the program, or if the standards are no longer applicable for the state, it's considered zero value. And so from time to time, we'll say, you know, usually, I mean, we haven't done, I haven't done it with Christine, but Matt would say, yep, they're valuable, as a procurement officer, he would sign off on it. But I think this lends to the point of, maybe we need to look at what our process is. And that's fine, we can certainly do that and go through a process and see what makes sense for us as a community, because there isn't anything that exists at this moment.
I think it's also important to remember too that, you know, historically as a committee, we, we have entrusted people that have been hired to take care of our district. So we have never been, since I've been here for eight years, a committee that micromanages every decision.
This is not about micromanaging.
Right? Well, I mean.
You can look at it however you want, Cherry, but I'm telling you right now, this is not about me telling Jen how to do a job, Wade not doing the right thing. What I'm doing is looking out for the taxpayers of this town, and if we gave away five thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars worth of dirt, we'll never know. It could have been twenty thousand dollars to.
No, we certainly, we certainly can now.
How?
There is a project right now for the senior center with a huge pile of dirt, offered up on Facebook for ten grand, and see if there's any takers.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's, if there's no takers for it, then it's not worth ten, we'll be down to five, and see if anybody buys it for five.
Exactly, but we didn't do that.
No, but I'm saying, we can find out if, if, I, I, it sounds like there are multiple people saying there's no value.
Yeah.
There's one saying there might be. So I'm saying, well, then find out, offer it up on Facebook for ten grand and see if there's any takers.
The dirt's gone, we're not giving it back.
No, there's a pile of dirt at the senior center.
Okay, I, I agree, so that's probably what the town's end up going to do, or they're gonna have the general contractor take it away.
Why would they have the general contractor take it away if there's value?
Who knows? I don't know, I have no idea. All I know is, we own the dirt, the dirt is ours.
But Nick, you're, you're arguing two different sides, you're saying they're gonna have the contractor, contractor to take away this thing that has this value, well, you're saying that we gave away this thing that potentially had value. So I'm saying, the way to find out what the value is, is, again, offer up that pile of dirt for ten grand and see if there's any takers.
And then what happens if, if they sold it for ten grand?
Well, then we'll know that there was ten grand of value in there.
I just, I mean.
It's different, it's different.
Different dirt, for sure, for sure.
Right, if we've had, if we've held it, it's not, I think it's not valued at anything, I don't even understand why we're even continuing with this conversation. To me, in my opinion, and, you know, listen, we can agree to disagree.
Of course.
Done before, right? And we're still friends after. In my opinion, from sitting through hours upon hours, hundreds of hours in these meetings, Wade believed he was doing the district a favor by keeping that pile, because we thought it had some value to it.
Agreed.
If we found out later that it did not. So in my mind, I greatly appreciate what Wade did was gavging it removed at no expense to this district.
But, but okay, but do you, like, think about what we're, think about this for a second, you're a business owner, you're gonna bring down, how long, Friday, let's call it, let's say they took off the weekend, so Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, you came in with month, with big trucks, machines, guys, manpower, X, Y, and Z.
It was a truck that they would load up, take off, and come back in one bulldozer.
Okay, sure, one bulldozer, one truck. Start figuring that out for an hourly wage of what's that's going to cost, having people do that when you're running a business. That had value to someone, they didn't just take the dirt and say, hey, this is perfect, we're gonna get the, we're gonna get rid of this free, and it has no value.
In lieu of a build, didn't it?
But you're, yeah, you're right, so, so he already said that they were gonna charge us to take it away, someone else was gonna charge us to take it away, this person said, hey, I can do it for free, I mean, this is like the three bids, right? The best bid was zero.
Well, we didn't bid, we didn't bid.
Well, we have two guys.
Are they written?
We have, we have two people who, who engage in the process, we have multiple people who I guess, and again, I mean, might be misunderstanding this, but there are multiple people said there's no value to that dirt. And, 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 again, I'm not a dirt expert, but I'm assuming that some of the construction people were dirt experts.
Said we can't.
And you're saying, well, but what if there was, but it sounds like most of the experts are saying there was no value to it.
But again, the DPW said, and I've talked to the DPW, they did not say there was no value to the dirt. They said they did not have the guys, the manpower, to spread it onto the field.
Did they say there was value to the dirt?
Yes, I also heard from them.
What was the value that they said there was?
Was that in writing, or did you just hear?
No, I just heard it, but that's, that's the thing that we're arguing, we're arguing, we're arguing.
I think about dirt, and it's not ridiculous.
Oh, yes, until we gave away twenty thousand dollars and we could have a nice couple of other with a sweep on the back.
That's your opinion, that this pile of junk was worth twenty grand. You can't say it's worth twenty grand and no one can say it's worth zero.
Oh, but God.
It's gone, the eyesore's gone, it was a huge liability for the district that it was there for six months, and quite frankly, it was ugly to look at because that was the last piece of this beautiful project.
Sure, no one's, no one's arguing that. No one's arguing that, what I'm saying is.
I don't see why this is here.
Okay, that's fine, that's your opinion.
I, I, I agree with Nick, that the idea that it was ugly was not.
That has nothing to do with what we're, what I'm trying to talk about. What I'm talking about is, one, clearly we need a policy and a procedure in place. Two, because if we don't have that, we're going to run into further issues, because if someone goes to get rid of a van, or whatever, whatever, we're gonna go get rid of something, we have nothing in place to do that.
That's different.
So, yes.
So do, go ahead, please. When it comes to surplus, we give it to the town and they, they take on that revenue. So if we were to get rid of a van or an old school bus, then we let the town hall know, we discuss it with DPW, and it gets approved at the board of documents meeting to accept that as surplus and.
And up on the bid side, correct.
And then it goes for public auction on the bid side.
So why didn't that happen with this?
Because it's not an asset?
It is, Phil is an asset, if you went to go grab dirt, you'd have to pay for it. Loom is forty dollars a yard. Dirt, Phil, if I went.
That wasn't loom, right? This is not loom.
I, I, again, I'm not saying we're getting forty dollars a yard for the dirt. What I'm saying is, if we got five dollars a yard for it and we have a thousand yards, that's five grand, we just gave away. There is value, there's value to dirt, I know it sounds stupid, but there's value. You can't tell me there's no value.
I think we're just challenged as an institution for learning, we are a school, we do not have the capacity to screen the dirt that's there, and we also don't have the capacity to help people take it away, right? We do not have that capacity. So if we wanted to sell it, if it was only worth five thousand dollars, and we're getting quotes on for ten and twelve to take it away, we're still out of money here.
Right.
Correct.
So can I just, can I just do the math real quick?
Yes.
So it was nine hundred fifty cubic yards, at five bucks, that's four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Five dollars is the retail price, so.
No, it's not retail price, but go ahead. Phil's not retail, go look, any landscapers, you're not getting five dollars a yard for any dirt.
So five, five dollars?
Sure.
So what is the price of Phil then?
I would say probably at least twenty, if it's something that we can screen, and Procy has a screener at his place, where he can screen it, he's selling it right now cash for thirty-two, it's not higher than thirty or forty.
So he's buying it for twenty?
What would they pay us?
Correct, correct.
So who's buying it for five?
I'm saying they're going to buy it from us for five, do all the work, unload it, take it away, screen it, do the whole nine times and turn around and sell.
All right, so you're saying they're selling it for forty?
Who knows?
Five is the, five is the cost, is that, that's.
We'll never know how much the dirt costs, it could have been a dollar, we just didn't go through a process.
I do agree with you.
That's fair. And wait, I'm, I'm, I have no issue with you personally, this is not a personal attack on you, I understand what, kind of how this happened, I understand, I actually do think you were doing the right thing, I think you were trying to say, we have a big awful looking pile here, get rid of it. The problem is, is we need to make sure we're doing things correctly from the start, and again, with like Dan said, whether bad planning, taking the dirt on, whatever the case may be, we need to have a process in place for this stuff. Because if we did, if that dirt was worth five grand, ten grand, we just gave away ten grand for no reason.
Right, okay, I'm simple, I've been here for a long time.
Yep.
I met three people out there that told me that that soil had no value at all. Three different contractors, including an engineer. I offered it to the town, to the DPW, if it had value, they have placed it in store.
DPW said it had value.
Well, if it had value.
They would have taken it, but it had value.
They would have came and they would have taken and they would have put it behind the salt shed, they would have, Nick, if it had any value at all.
I understand that, but like, when I talked to Jared, Jared said, I would love to take a few hundred yards of this, I don't have the ability to do it.
A truckload, I offered him two truckloads.
Well done.
Take whatever you can take, and he didn't take any of it. But, but I understand, listen, the other point that I will make, and this kind of confirmed to me that this had no value. Lynch had to come back and they had a topsoil and everything over by the field, right, they had to plant bushes, they had to plant grass, they brought in higher seed and all that. They brought their own topsoil in for those areas, they didn't go over to the pile, which they originally said they were going to do, and use some of that soil to do it, they brought their own topsoil in. So they didn't even.
They brought their own topsoil, because they were charging us for it. If they used our own topsoil, they're not gonna make money, they're just moving it. I mean, again.
No, because by the scope, it was theirs anyways, they could charge us for it. So according to this contract, they already owned it.
They owned it.
So they could have charged us.
They usually ask them for some.
Well, they left it there because we requested it, and they didn't say, no, 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 that's all, as they said, you want us to leave it there, fool? You got it, and they left it there.
And they left it to the town and not the good stuff.
Yeah.
That's really what happened, honestly, that's what.
No, wait, like I said, I'm not, I'm not trying to attack you.
Kill it.
Nope.